So the planning board meeting will come to order and Paige will give us her update on the planners report.
Yes, thank you. So I have a combined report here. It's going to the EDC as well as the planning board. I wanted to start the conversation just to recognize, you know, the impact COVID-19 has had on all of us, but in my role as economic development, whatever I am,[22.02][22.02](laughter) I wanted to talk about how we can help businesses. And I was on our planners' listserv, and so there's some stuff I'll talk about after this. But first, I wanted to give a brief update. The first thing we did was the temporary outdoor dining, and that's been really successful. We have permitted 17 businesses to add temporary outdoor dining, right up to this week. I thought we were done, and this week we did the VFW. And I think it was last week we got Rally Point finalized. So any restaurant that already had outdoor dining was able to continue to use it, but these were for those that wanted to expand. So we have 17 right now that are underway. I noticed the other day I was walking to Congdon's because I needed a new alternator. But anyway, I was walking there, and the tables of the commons were taken for breakfast. So it was really nice to walk by people eating breakfast outside. And it actually made me think that it's not the worst thing to do any time of the year, you know, any time of the summer, whether COVID or not, but we'll deal with that later. Also, the CDBG grant, I've mentioned that to you before. I don't really have much more of an update. Actually, I do. Today, right before I came in here, I got an email from the planner in Bellingham. Bellingham's the lead community on this grant. And we have gone through procurement or whatever. We now have a consultant onboard to administer this. And so we're having a kickoff meeting on August 26th to find out what exactly is going on. I've had some inquiries from businesses. Again, this is just for, it's income-based, and it's for businesses with five or fewer employees. If you go on the town or the EDC website, you'll see there's a link there just to enter your name and your info. And then, once we figure out what's going on, because again, this is a new grant funded by the federal government, being administered by the state government, and obviously, it's not something COVID we've ever had to deal with. So we're getting through the process of how to run it, and we hope by September to be able to start taking applications and moving forward with this. So stay tuned for that. If anybody's hearing this and they want to do, again, go to the EDC website. It's choosefoxborough.com, and you can click on the CDBG grant or the microenterprise grants and just enter your name and information. And then, the only other thing I wanted to bring up is some of these measures. I have a list of measures here to increase community resiliency. And these are just a bunch of steps we could be doing to look at, because what we're concerned about is the winter. It's been great in the summer. You know, we can have restaurants outside, and retailers can go outside and meet people at the door, and everything's a lot easier when it's nice out. But when we start getting into October, November, and things start to cool down, we start getting more rain. We've had no rain, really. It's going to be a challenge for some of these businesses who've been able to, you know, probably barely hang on. So there's some comments here about looking at zoning changes, looking at how we can help non-restaurants. You know, we've done a really great job helping restaurants, and it's a little harder to figure out how to help others, but, you know, maybe look at that. They're talking about change of use and mixed use right now. A lot of times, you know, as we saw with what happened last meeting with the change of uses, it becomes a little cumbersome at times. So, you know, do we want to look at in the interim, is there anything we can do on that? And again, this is all predicated on getting to town meeting. If we were to do anything, most of it would be a zone change. And we're not even 100% sure there's going to be a town meeting this fall, you know, I mean, given COVID and if we don't have a big demand. So it could be moot, but I just wanted to raise the issue, suggest you all take a look at this and see if there's any opportunities for us to sort of help out the business community, put all our heads together, and figure out what we could do, if anything. So I don't want to spend too much time digging into it because I really haven't spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I want to also work with the EDC on it. But I did want to bring it up to the planning board and ask you guys. Ron had a big role in the outdoor dining, so he was a big driver on that, pushing me to get that done. But look how well it worked out. So if anybody has any ideas or thoughts or want to jump on, just please.
So I just have a question, which is, has there been any analysis either county-wide or more specifically Foxborough-wide about established businesses and how they've been impacted, whether, you know, have there been massive layoffs? Have there been just people who are working from home, like for bigger companies like Schneider or somebody like that? How has it impacted the community of people coming into the town hall to have conversations with, you know, Bobby or Keegan or Hannah Laura about their situation as a business? Is there any way we can find out that information?
We don't really have that information, no. I did do a survey back when we first were going into the CBDG grant, so I have that. But that was a couple of months ago, as you know, and it wasn't, there was only about 20 people filled it out, or 20 businesses. So no, we don't have that, and maybe that's something we want to look at, you know, collecting some data.
Obviously, I wouldn't want us to feel like we were entitled to any privileged information about the company, but just try to get a better idea of how Foxborough businesses have been impacted and their employees, and more like, what are we looking at as a community in terms, so we can maybe tailor some of this stuff to make it work better?
Right, right. That's a great idea, and I think that's something, too, I'll bring up with the EDC, and maybe that's an initiative, you know, we could take on. We do have Survey Monkey, I mean, we have the ability to collect some data. So maybe some good idea, you know, you might be a good person to help figure out what inputs we want, you know, what do we ask? And, you know, any businessperson who kind of has a better insight into sort of what the key indicators would be for the town, and, you know, how we can even help. I mean, that's the other thing, is, you know, do we want to find out this information just to know it? Do we want to find out this information? Is there anything we can do to help it? That sort of thing. But it's good to have the information.
Yeah, personally, I don't think, you know, it's a thing we just want to know. I think it's, the purpose is to like, maybe we'll find out that none of these things are the right thing. We have to find out three others that would work better.
Right.
Or they're all good, and how does it apply to individual companies or employees or whatever?
Right. And I think, too, it's really challenging, having attended the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative Meeting, first Wednesday of every month, is that what it is? 7:30 a.m.?
7:30.
Yep. If anybody wants to join, it's on Zoom now, so it's really easy. You could do it in your pajamas. But we were talking about that, and Cindy was pointing out, Cindy Jewelers, and I'm hoping that they'll tailor it better if we have more shutdowns. You know, someone like Cindy being closed, when she could easily do, you know, a one-on-one appointment, or, you know, so many of these smaller businesses were shut down blanket. And then, you know, a Home Depot or Lowe's is open, but Cindy's can't be open. So we all know the sort of disparity there and the frustration of that. And I guess the hope is, is that there'll be a little more tailored response, if a response is needed again. I am not sure that's going to be the case, unfortunately, but, you know, the problem is these little businesses are getting lumped altogether, and, you know, that you could, it'd be better if we had metrics to measure by where like someone like Cindy could be open as long as she did X, Y, and Z, and, you know, there were parameters. And so hopefully, that's being worked on. I don't really, we don't really know from the state what's coming next. I mean, I think right now, everybody's so focused on schools, we're not really even focused on this. But this is the stuff that planners, you know, we need to be thinking about moving forward, and, you know, getting Jay Barrows and Paul Feeney kind of help get that governor's ear and start thinking like that. So I think those are the types of...
I will help you with that, because a very close friend of mine, Aaron Aine from Kronos, is on that board that talks to the lieutenant governor every week.
Right.
And the governor every two weeks. And I will see what I can find out from him, that if the governor continues to feel like he needs to pull back further, how's that going to impact small community businesses as well as these bigger ones that have more socialization, like restaurants or bars or things like that?
Right.
I am a little surprised. I don't think I understood that in a situation like hers, she was restricted from having even a one-on-one consult, and does anyone know why that is?
That's at the very beginning, yeah. She is open to do that now.
Yeah, she's open now.
Going on now for a few weeks.
But during the shutdown, she was shut down, you know, like everybody was, unless you were one of those essential services. So it's hopeful that we don't end up back to that type of shutdown.
I do know, I saw him recently, and he told me that the governor made, you know, in one of these phone calls, made it extraordinarily clear to bars that they will not reopen. He said, "Don't ask me, don't start with me." He goes, "You know, we're at where we are now, but if there's any further pullback, you guys will be closed for the fall."
Yeah.
That's it. And it's not so much outdoor dining, that's more just like...
Right.
...the ability to go have cocktails somewhere.
And we don't really have that. I mean, maybe Wormtown. Well, you know, fortunately, most of our places are restaurants.
They all have to serve food, don't they?
Right. So as long as they serve food, they're okay. But I happened to see on Facebook, I live in Franklin, and there's a distillery that opened up in Franklin just right before COVID hit. I think it's called 67 Degrees or something. And they had to put out a statement yesterday that said, "Due to the governor's new regulations, you must now order food," you know, and so they've had to change. They were acting more like a distillery brewery. You could go in and not do it, but he was very clear, that's not allowed, which is rough for the small breweries. I mean, as you know, that's, they're different. They're open like four to eight. You know, they're not last call at the bar. But again, that's the hard thing with this whole thing, is the one-size-fits-all approach. And hopefully, we can at least, you know, because Cindy in particular is an extra layer of complication because she has insurance issues. It's not like she can just grab her diamonds and bring them out to the front sidewalk. You know, she has a lot of factors that, you know, so it really does hamstring her. But I'm sure everybody has their own unique case. So hopefully, we can do what we can from an advocacy level, and we'll work on that.
And they're very strict. I mean, I went to Conrad's to talk to them about getting gift cards for new residents who move in. And so I was waiting for Amanda, the manager, she was running around, and they said, "Oh, sit here," which was right at the bar. So I sat there, and then one of the servers came up and said, "Sorry, you have to turn your chair, you're not allowed to sit at the bar." It's like, okay. And they weren't serving me, but...
Well, they probably just want to make sure they don't get one of those complaints.
Yeah.
You know, some patron looks over and says, "That person's at the bar," and then they drop a dime, and next thing you know, they, poor Pauline and John are chasing it down, and so on, so...
Yeah, so, okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you for your report.
That's a good point, though, Jim.
Anything on interactive subdivisions?
Yeah, I think Paige has a report on that.
I do? What do I have to report about it?
Trucks.
Oh, right, the trucks. Well, Lance can refer. Lance, why don't you come on up?
Belcher?
This is Belcher. So River Ridge has been...
I knew that was going to be an issue, and I should have said something at the time.
Well, the good news is...
We should have put a restriction on that.
Well, the good news is, it was dealt with during the earth removal permit by the Board of Selectmen, so there is a restriction. Sometimes restrictions don't help. So, but it seems like we're getting a handle on it. So Lance, fortunately, stepped in. We got, Katie up in the Selectmen's office got a complaint. We were able to say, "Why don't you check the earth removal permit?" Thank goodness, there was language in there. They responded quickly, and then they didn't, and then...
Yeah, so we got the first complaint.
Hold the microphone up to you.
We got the first complaint. It was handled then. They did respond, told us that they notified all of their transporting and vendors who were delivering stuff to the site that they need to respect and stay off of Spring Street.
Going past the landfill.
Exactly. Then there was a repeat offense. I went back out there. Apparently, what happened was, what I was told happened was, they were paving that day, so they had, you know, they had the contractor who was paving there just for that day. They came in there, they paved, they left. That contractor, apparently the one who was removing the equipment to pave for the day, went down Spring Street, most likely. So I told them, "Please remind your paving contractor that they're not supposed to be going there." However, there is no more paving currently scheduled out there, so they have significant infrastructure work remaining on the rest of the road before they'll be doing any more paving, so it should be a non-issue, at least for a while, hopefully. But we did remind them that they are not allowed to be using that.
And for anybody who doesn't know, this is Lance, and he's our new town engineer.
Hi.
Well, he's our old town engineer, but he came along before COVID, and so no one got to meet him.
Yeah.
So he's been around for, what, how many months now?
Five.
Five months, so...
Nice to meet you, yeah.
And we're kind of all meeting him for the first time-ish, so...
I actually worked with the planning board over in Sharon. One of the former Foxborough Planning Board members, Shannon McLaughlin, I worked with her. So she always, you know, spoke highly of the Foxborough Planning Board.
She was a great member.
Yep.
How many years were you in Sharon?
Five years.
Five years, okay. As the assistant, right?
Yep, I was the assistant town engineer, yep.
So we stole him.
Jump ship.[825.73][825.73](laughter) Happy to do it. Good opportunity.
All right. Minutes?
I received comments from Mr. Rhodes, so the process is out.
So...
You know, he's an alternate, he's still doing minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
And would that be for June 11th only?
I'm talking about June 11th, yes.
Okay. Do you second it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is there a motion for July 23rd?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for July 23rd.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So, oh, just on time. It being ordered about 7:15 p.m., we have a public hearing for stormwater management regulations, adoption of stormwater management regulations to support the stormwater management bylaws of the town of Foxborough.
We have Lance.
We have Lance. Lance, you're really on tonight.
So just to provide a summary, as you know, a stormwater bylaw was passed at town meeting a couple of years ago, and since that time, we needed to put some regulations in place to support that bylaw. It's been under review for quite a little while. We had our resident engineering expert, John Rhodes, we had Bill Buckley, who probably knows the subdivision regs better than pretty much anybody, and Gabby worked a lot on this, so I will pass it on to them. But basically, I think we have to pass these.
So as of June 30th, we ended the second year of the stormwater permit, the MS4 permit that all the towns are beholden to. Within that timeframe, we were supposed to have enacted regulations that, you know, detailed sort of the construction, you know, inspection requirements and such, which are these regulations. I know you guys have, you know, been going over it extensively. It's been worked on for some time now, multiple people have been involved. However, the state's understanding that, you know, not everything sort of happened in that timeframe because of, you know, coronavirus and everything associated with that. So they're giving us some leeway there. Ideally, though, I mean, we are supposed to be turning in our annual report for year two in September, and, you know, it would be good for, it would look good on the town if this would at least be in place by then, even though it wasn't done by the June 30th timeframe. So ideally, what I'd like to do is, you know, I've reviewed them, you know, it sounds like it's been extensively by Chris Gallagher, Bill Buckley, John Rhodes, and so many others. They seem to be fully in performance. They don't really go, you know, crazy in any directions. Pretty much the essentials, it looks like, it kind of sticks to, which is important. So if the board is willing, it'd be nice if we can, you know, get these approved and in place, and then worry about any future changes down the road, which is the benefit of having a regulation as opposed to trying to change a bylaw requiring a town meeting. So that's what I'm here today for, is seeing if we can, you know, get these approved and move forward and into place.
And just to point out, you know, there is, there are different levels of response to this permit requirement. And Foxborough took the approach of being somewhat not heavy-handed. You know, we, basically, we are meeting the requirements of this permit at the federal and state level, but we're not really going much further than that. Some communities regulate, you know, what people do in their backyards, and I mean, really down to the nth degree. And the group, and at town meeting, this was discussed, too. We don't, we didn't want to make this so burdensome to the community members, where we're not dealing with developers, we're now dealing with homeowners and permit processes. And we were just talking about, you know, you put permit conditions in place, then you have to monitor them, you have to, you know, we don't have the staff and whatnot to keep all of this in check. And usually, the mitigation for these small projects is quite minor. So it's not like these are the ones that are really causing the major impacts, it's sort of the larger ones. So from that perspective, this is not a heavy-handed regulation or bylaw and regulation, so...
I would agree. I mean, the original draft that came to us from the consultant brought everybody in as a quarter acre, and we felt that that was a little bit burdensome, and it went to an acre. And there was a lot of language in there that was obligate in nature without any leeway out. And we changed a lot of that to leave it in our hands as the approving authority as to whether or not supplemental information would be needed. And one of the big things was that if your site was, could reasonably expected to be within the floodplain, but FEMA had not studied it, that you had to provide a floodplain elevation. That's a big ticket. Bill can do that, but he doesn't need any more practice doing it. And so we changed it to shape the wording that if, in our opinion, it was necessary, we could ask for it. And there were several other situations like that. And I think Paige's explanation of being a little bit heavy-handed was accurate. So I think it's a good workable plan. Bill worked on it quite a bit, too, and we had lots of discussions about it. I think it's a good, I think it's a good regulation. It's time to approve it.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board?
I would just ask either to Gabby or Bill Early, has any substantive highlights that, you know, you should know? Obviously, you know, we haven't given the same degree of scrutiny that all you people have, or yourself, John, you know?
I mean, so, you know, I guess one substantive, you guys have, you know, you've relegated sort of the area of disturbance to one acre or more, which is the minimum that, you know, the state will allow you to do. I've seen some towns go, you know, much, much less than that, much, much less than that, even less than a quarter of an acre in some cases, you know, so it's, which can be very burdensome, not only for, you know, homeowners and developers who are affected by these, you know, that very minor disturbance area, but also for the towns who have to administrate those and oversee all of these projects now triggering this small threshold. You know, so it's cost for the town, it's cost for the homeowners, and, you know, I don't know that necessarily that the benefit meets the cost in those cases, you know? So we're putting all this sort of, you know, so we capped it to the minimum for now. The benefit, I think, in the way that the state is now and towns are now setting it up, by having a bylaw and then a regulation, and sort of moving it out of the sort of town meeting sector, it gives us much more flexibility, where if you guys then say, "We don't like this so much," you have now the opportunity as the board to go like, "Let's talk about readdressing this," and do it so with a public hearing instead of a whole-town meeting vote. So, I mean, I think, you know, don't feel so pigeonholed, you know, by this vote necessarily, you know, because there is some flexibility there.
Those are anything you want to like, that or say?
The only thing I wanted to ask tonight, one of the few things actually, is we have a fee in there.
How should we go up to the microphone?
The fee in there is a $1,000 fee application. Which, if this was just Joe homeowner, that would be, I think, beyond the pale. But for one acre, I can't honestly think of any projects that are going to disturb an acre that are not going to come before planning or conservation or something, so... But my question is, is, it also has a section that talks about, and it's on page... 20... I'm sorry, it's on page 26. So it's application and review schedule. So I brought this up actually during some of the other discussions, actually, the very first discussion with the town's consultant. The review fee. So will that be, and I seem to remember that at the time, Chris Gallagher was the town engineer, and I think he volunteered that it would be reviewed within the staff as opposed to a 53G account where they're going to hit you for $1,000 or $3,000 or something like that. So I didn't know if that would be worth discussing now, or are you going to just leave that up to staff review on something like that?
So if it was a homeowner, would they be responsible for the fee in addition to the $1,000 application fee?
For anybody. So if you file under this application, you're filing $1,000, and then you get, it's just like, it's just like a special permit, planning bill, whatever.
Right.
You pay the fee.
Right.
And then BSC comes back and says, "It's X amount of dollars," and you pay it. And this is the same thing. So the question I have is, is that the way this is going to be, or will it be reviewed within the staff?
I mean, wouldn't you want some flexibility there both ways? I mean, could we say, you know, based on a determination, you know, by the board at, you know, with the advice or counsel of the staff, you know, whether you need to, whether that can be done internally or not?
Or it could be waived at the discretion of the board?
Let's ask Lance.[1457.51][1457.51](laughter) Because Lance is the one who would be reviewing it at this point. It'd be Lance or Chris.
Right.
I mean, just one of those, one-size-might-not-fit-all things, you know?
Right, no, certainly not. I mean, again, the trigger's an acre here. So, I mean, this is not Joe homeowner. Most Joe homeowners aren't going to disturb an entire acre of land when one go. Those are usually larger developments. So, I mean, there are going to be fees, you know, costs associated with that, which should be, you know, the responsibility of the developer and not the town. But, you know, in terms of setting sort of a fee structure, it's hard to say. I mean, it is going to be ultimately, I think, at the discretion, probably, you know, of the Stormwater Authority, which is you guys, which, you know, which says, it says, "A fee estimate may be provided by the Stormwater Authority." So ultimately, I think it is your discretion with whether the fee is adequate or inadequate, you know, so that's going to be assessed for it, and I think it can be discussed, so there is flexibility there.
What is the purpose of the fee?
It says for, "Including engineering review, legal review, and clerical fees associated with the public hearing and permitting process."
Where does that fee money go? That's my, what are we charging for?
Well, wait, let's not get, there's two different fees we're talking, because Lance is talking about the review fee.
Yep.
That typically goes to the consultant, like with, you know, BSC takes all of it.
Exactly.
But the $1,000 goes to the general fund.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe there's some flexibility there, like if you're already applying concurrently. Would there ever be a scenario, John or Bill or Gabby or anybody, Lance, that where you'd apply for this and not have a development with it? Like, would you ever just, because I'm thinking those projects would come forward with site plan review and special permit, they're already paying a fee, so is there a way that if it's already paying one fee, we maybe don't hit them up?
Well, I think the application fee is to cover our costs, you know, your time, you know, the staff time to review the application.
Sure.
The review fee appears to be structured separately from that. So if you guys saying, "We want to hire our own engineer to review these plans, we need legal counsel to, you know, to review these plans," that's what that fee is going to. It's basically a fee, that money that the developer would be giving you in order for you to pay for those services.
But it wouldn't cost us that much to have it done. Are we allowed to charge more than it would cost us?
No, I mean, that, you're thinking of the application fee.
Under one. The review fee, we don't make any money.
The review fee would not be more than it costs us.
Goes directly to the consultant. In fact, they pay the consultant, it never comes through the town, it goes, at least in under our current arrangement with subdivisions, BSC gets paid directly from the developer, through us, but...
So if this became a new layer as part of the BSC review, I would presume that they may, not exponentially, they may raise their fee from whatever the standard would be on a 10-acre subdivision, and now they have this new layer, they're going to say, "Oh, that's an extra $2,000," or whatever it is. But we don't, we don't see the bill from BSC, do we?
Gabby does, but you don't.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'm just saying, it's like, I hear Bill's concern, but I think he's right that the concern's going to be more for individuals or small, really small developing, as opposed to some of the larger things or things of scale that come through here that we're already asking, you know, an outside consultant to review. asking, you know, an outside consultant to review. And that's in the bylaw just for those things, so this just becomes a new wrinkle. I don't know. What do you think of that?
Well, I think that the reality is, is if it's coming through you anyways for any type of permit, this bylaw won't apply. Because, because it specifically says that if you're getting a permit from the Conservation Commission and/or the Planning Board where the permit involves the DEP stormwater standards, which all of your permits do, as well as the conservation, this does not apply. So it really, in my mind, in, in all of the years I can think of, the only thing I can, off the top of my head I can think of this would apply to might be some guy who was doing a gravel removal permit in his yard. You know, he wants to take down a hill in his backyard, so now he needs a gravel removal permit because he's taking out gravel and maybe he's disturbing over an acre, and he'll have to come see you as well. I think the way you've structured it is great. I think it's going to minimize duplicative effort, which is what I deal with every day. I deal with layers and layers of bureaucracy doing the same thing. So I just wanted to make sure that, and I think Jeff's idea is perfect, you know, you have the flexibility to do that, but I wanted to bring it up. Because I'll tell you why, because, and not in Foxborough, but in many towns, I see the 53G totally abused. You have a full staff, you know, a full engineering staff, but I'm still paying, well, my clients are still paying $10,000 for an outside reviewer. Like, you know, why isn't the staff doing this? And I understand there's some, you know, stuff, but, you know, there's a balance, and I understand that, and I would have, I'm not even, I'm not asking to get it thrown up, I just want to bring it up.
Right.
So everybody's kind of thinking about it and putting it back, and I had brought it up at the very beginning when we were talking to the towns consultant about it. So, that's all.
I was going to say, actually, after reading through item number two below, it's pretty clear, I think that that's kind of built in already in this wording by saying that, you know, applicants who fail to pay the additional, you know, fee, within five days notice that those fees will be required. So implicit in that, I would think, is that a determination is going to be made, whether or not that's going to be the case or not. I mean, it's, it's right there, kind of, like I say, not specifically or overtly, but it's implicit in that wording, I think.
Right. Because we don't have language like that anywhere else that says if you don't take care of this in five days, you're just automatically disapproved, do we?
We have that in the...
No, I don't think so.
I mean, I think Bill's right. I think there would be a rare occurrence where this would be triggered in some other permit that would follow the Concom or our review would not be triggered.
Okay. So do we feel that this language is flexible enough, the asterisk there, that would allow, if for some reason Lance or Chris said, "Oh, this is easy enough, we can do it, we don't..." Do we feel it's clear enough that there's the flexibility to both have it done in-house and out of house?
I mean, I would say, again, as the...
Because there's, what if there's no fee estimate?
Language expert. Honestly, it might, you know, it could be a little clearer if that's, you know, the board's intent. You know, I think this certainly suffices for flexibility purposes, but the one thing I will say that's still a little opaque is whether or not the, that review in and of itself is being waived or could be waived, but that's not really what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is that whether the review is going to basically be held to a higher and presumably more expensive standard.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be held to a higher standard, Jeff. I think it's going to be somebody different other than professional staff making sure that it's held to the standard. So, that's...
Well, presumably, the only real rationale for doing that is if we didn't think we had the requisite expertise in-house.
Right.
Or workload.
Or bandwidth.
Or workload, yeah.
Time's the bigger issue in most cases, and that's why we write these types of things into these regulations, is because we can't guarantee if, you know, if we just got a line of projects coming in, you know, they're going to expect all of, each one's going to expect all of our time. And that doesn't always happen, and like, you know, we have things to do unfortunately, and sometimes you have to, you know, have that flexibility to make the developer pay for their own review service.
I think too, I just want to be clear as we discuss this, of who makes that decision? Is it this, our office? Is it, do we have to like then wait for a planning board meeting and then come have you guys vote on it? Do we consult with Lance and Chris? You know, so I want to make sure it's very clear whether this is something, like, I don't want our first application, which hopefully never comes in, but come in and we all look at each other and go, "So what do we decide and how do we do this?" You know, I want to be sure we're clear, like, do you guys want to decide on it? Do you want to let us decide?
I'd like to see it be the decision of the board.
I would too. I mean, again, I would expect that, you know, in the course of an application, you know, you would make a recommendation.
Exactly.
You guys would make a recommendation.
That's the way it seems to be written.
Well, you, just so you know, it's going to add a lot of time, I mean, not a lot, but it's going to add time. Like, at the front of the project, it's going to be a delay where we're going to have to, when someone, someone comes in to meet with us, we're going to say, "Listen, you're going to have to get on the agenda in two weeks and come make your case to the board and all..." So just so you know, it's almost an administrative thing, so I'm actually a little surprised that you would want that.
I think it is.
Because it seems like it's more a bandwidth slash complexity issue, but I also don't want necessarily need that decision-making authority, so I'm just saying, it just might be a halt in the process while we wait for it. And it seems...
But given the fact that we don't have a fee schedule right now that we can put our finger on and say...
We never do. Review fees are never set.
Never, they're never set.
They're all, our subdivision regs are the same way. It's subject to the project, so when someone submits to us, then BSC comes back and gives them a quote. So the question would be, the problem is with this is if we have to go to the planning board, I mean, the question is, does that happen prior to application? Does it wait till you get an application and then there's a delay, no engineering reviews being done while the planning board decides whether who's going to do it? So that's the thing I'm just talking about, like, it's almost an administrative process that could become a planning board process, which is somewhat unfortunate.
I think it has to be in your hands. I don't think we can slow projects now or applicants waiting for planning board meetings. I think you have to make that call and advise us.
What do you think, Gabby? You're the one who's like been most involved in this, so. Anna probably do most of it, so.
I think that the way that we work it right now for not Stormwater but for all the other projects is that we, we send the, or the applicant's engineer sends to our consultants all the materials, and then they look at it and give us an estimate of how much it's going to cost. And then they have to approve whether or not they're going to pay for it. Obviously, they all agreed to pay for it. But I think it will be, it will add another week or two to the process if the board, you know, has to vote on that, so.
Well, that's presuming that you've already made a determination that it warrants that additional level of...
Exactly, right. So we have to first make a determination with professional staff whether or not we're going to do this in-house, or if it's large enough that it requires outside consultants.
Right.
And then we have to send it to the consultant and get back from them an estimate to present to the developer.
Well, why couldn't it proceed here, and I'm sure Bill's done this, and I used to do it, when I was before a board in any number of towns on a regular basis, I would say, "Hey, I have something unusual coming up," talking to the staff, "And here's the issue." When it's something like this, where you would expect that there wouldn't have to be an independent review for this particular writing because it would be enveloped in a larger project, and I would ask the staff if I could come in for five minutes and just have a discussion before the board in advance as to what, and here's, and with a quick, you know, a quick look at what the plan is, what the potential issues are, and say, "I think this is something we can work out with staff."
Just an informal.
Yeah, it's informal in order to determine whether or not there's going to be a review fee. And I'm sure you've done that, Bill, in the towns you go into all the time. I used to do it all the time. And I chuckle a little bit because when these first came up, like, in the early 90s, Canton was one of the first towns, I used to go over and see our friend Bob Murphy. And I'd file the plans, and then Bob would say, "Let me look this over and I'll call you." And then a couple of days later, I'd sit down with Murphy and show him what I'd done, and that was it. If he had a problem, I made an edit. But he was staff. I agree with John. I don't think it's going to, I think it's up to, it's our, an applicant's responsibility to coordinate it prior, to talk to staff, and then, so they're not blind, you're not just throwing a permit at them, because you only have 20 days to hold it here, 21 days. So that's our job to do that, and then we would have a discussion with the staff, and then if there was a disagreement, and then I think it would be appropriate for the board to come before the board, but I would guess 99% of the time, there's not going to be a disagreement.
Sure.
But, so that would, so really, it takes it off of you. You only need to get involved if there's a disagreement.
And to be fair, the, our outside consultants have a very good price, so we're not price gouging anybody when we're having our consultants do the review, so it's, they're, they're very, their prices are very good.
Yep, they are.
One last question to this, without beating a dead horse. So would we then presume that if we were doing this review internally, that there would be no secondary cost, or is that all rolled into the application fee? Because what you were just suggesting is that your consultants, you know, were very reasonable, and I guessed that you were suggesting that their pricing would not be out of line with what we could do it for in-house. So if we're going to do it in-house, there's no other fee then, just to clarify that. Or is there?
The application fee can't be used to pay the consultant, like...
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking.
No, no, but if, on the other hand, they give us the $1,000, and between the three of you, you say, "Yeah, can you take a look at this?" And you, and you know, you're going to do some type of review.
Sure.
Would there be additional charges?
There'd be a bill for that.
We can only charge them for if, yeah, if, you know, if there's no need for us to consult with a consultant, then there'd be no charge.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Right, the application fee is always considered to cover the staff time, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yep, me too.
So, any other questions from anybody else, staff or otherwise?
Well, thank you.
Okay. So we need a vote on this, is that the idea? Undertain a motion to...
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, we have to close the public hearing. Where would I be? Like, you know, Tracy's not here tonight to give me a shot.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Undertain a motion to approve the Stormwater management regulations, Town of Foxborough, there's no date on this, but has submitted to the board today?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, guys. Pleasure.
Lance, good to meet you. Congratulations.
Yes, very nice to meet you.
You used to work with Peter O'Kane.
I did, yes.
Yeah.
He was a good boss.
Yeah, he's a good guy. You know, I go back to the days of Bob Vey before, before Peter was there. Because Eric is still there. He was a town engineer, then he became DVW director.
Yeah, Eric's still there.
And I understand my good friend Greg Meister is retired.
Retired, yeah. Got a nice place, a lot of big plotland.
Good. So he's staying in Massachusetts, because I think his wife came from like Wisconsin or something like that.
I'm pretty sure he stays in Massachusetts.
Good for him.
I don't know anything about Wisconsin.
Okay.
Thanks, Lance.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks, too.
Oh, we'll be... So, it being some past 7:30 PM, we have deliberations for special permit, decision for Kingswood Commons, construction of a mixed-use project, retail, commercial, and residential units, six to eight centennial, Street 31 to 35 South Street, and 37 to 39 South Street. The board closed the public hearing at our last meeting, and this decision was reviewed by Mr. Peterson and Mr. Rhodes, and changes were made to some of the language, I believe. I mean, I read through it. I think it's a good document, but I'm open to hearing whatever.
I read through it myself as well, and I feel fine.
Everybody's point of view about it, staff included, if there's things, anything else there that you think...
Well, I just have to remind you of the, you weren't here, Kevin, for the fire station vote, but the tedious nature of it is, it's very clear for special permit votes, we don't always take the care to do it, but for projects where it's potentially going to be litigious and/or, you know, when they're 22 pages, down from what, 24, 25 from the fire station, so we cut it down, but we are going to need to go through the findings, and you're going to need, like, I wrote them, well, actually, I didn't. Jeff really wrote a lot of them too, so, but you guys need to affirm them kind of individually and make them your own. You know, if you see changes, feel free, this needs to be your decision, not mine, so we need to kind of go through the process and make sure that you own it.
No problem. And I would say that, you know, any rewriting was more in keeping with avoiding any potential issues with litigation and not anything substantive, so.
So Paige, are you suggesting that we need to take multiple votes on the points, or can we take one omnibus vote?
Well, if you recall, I'm trying to recall how we did it.
I can't remember myself.
I mean, we lost Tracy. Remember Tracy, I think, did the reading of, like, she read each finding, and then, you know, the group kind of discussed them. So I don't know how we want to, if you want to do that level. I could kind of read the, I mean, I guess I could, well, I don't want to be the one to do it. The thing is, I want to make sure it's you guys, not me, so, I mean...
Did we have enough discussion under the findings?
Exactly.
Previously, so that we can just say, you know, to sum it up, we reviewed the findings at our last hearing. Some changes have been made, the board finds the change is satisfactory, and as a procedural matter, we find, we find the findings to be appropriate, and we voted.
I would agree, because our fingerprint is on most every topic here.
Yeah.
That we have discussed.
Well, I think some key points, some key findings you at least want to discuss, and I know you have, but to affirm, you know, sort of, whether it's in harmony with the surrounding area, and that sort of, maybe the historic discussion, some certain key things, you know, whether it's consistent with the master plan, whether it meets the needs. So if some of these are pretty important, I just want to make sure we hit on them. So for example, under context, I mean, let's just acknowledge that the design right now changed quite a bit from what was originally submitted. It went through design review, they had some changes, and then it came back to the planning board. There was some community input, and then ultimately, we made even more changes. So I think, you know, it would be appropriate if you agree that the board would find that this is in harmony with this Foxborough Center based on all those changes. Right?
So moved. However you'd like us to say it, but yes, I would agree with that. That is all, that is all factual.
Right.
Yes.
But to simplify, the changes were made because we requested it.
Yes.
So he's satisfying us. So our fingerprints are already on that, is what I'm saying.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a well-defensible decision here, just in case.
Right, I don't think we should broad-brush it.
I mean, so like, let's, we can note that we spent considerable time on Building A, that's the one facing the common, and if you recall, that ended up a brick, a brick appearance, just because that was more consistent with what's around, you know, the Toddson Building, the post office, the bank next door, so that's why Building A. And I think Jeff's point here that was very critical, and you see it throughout the decision, was that we're not necessarily trying to recreate a historical environment per se, but we're trying to, what's the word? We want to represent the district and enhance the district, not conflict with the district, but we're not necessarily trying to replicate any particular look or any historic appearance that is...
I think the very last sentence is the full thing, that the board believes the external design of the proposed building is not out of character, where the building's in this vicinity, and that in that respect, it's harmonious with those structures.
And really, I mean, although we don't say this explicitly, because you probably shouldn't, I mean, I think that you can get yourself in trouble if you start implying that there is a specific historical character. I mean, the character is like all over the map, which kind of lends partly, you know, to the charm we have and affection for it, but it's, you know...
You're absolutely right.
I think we get ourselves in trouble when people start talking that way, and many people do, and, you know, you just got to be careful about that stuff, you know?
Something heavy comes into it, it's...
So, anyway.
...done this by the proposed Baker Street historical district, unproposed district, and modified district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So basically, you, I think you would find that it meets the requirements for ground floor transparency of windows, it meets the vehicle and parking requirements. Here's a key one, historic structures. This was a great catch by Jeff, and, you know, I had kind of glossed over it on the original draft, but in fact, these are. Two of the buildings on South Street were designated as historically significant by the Historic Commission, and that allowed them to put a demolition delay in effect. But in Foxborough, that's the extent of it. So the demolition delay has passed, and therefore, and no alternatives were found for those buildings, so therefore, while they did find that, there's no binding requirement, so... And then we go on to say that the board worked very closely with the applicant to ensure that it reflected a New England-style mixed use to be compatible with the Uptown character.
Yes.
So, and I want to make note here, it's not even captured here, but there was also considerable concern from, say, the Board of Health and Public Safety about the condition of those existing buildings over there, so, and the conditions that the people live in. So, you know, that's, that is something, you know, I realize it is a loss, but there are concerns about the situation over there. So that is something that was reflected in comments sensitively. I mean, no one wants to say anything bad, but, you know, there is some concern over there at times over that, so.
I mean, honestly, I'm not so...
There was some support.
Not so sure how hard I'd push on that issue, if only because the counterargument could be made that it's the same ownership in effect.
Right. But the housing styles are, you know, the rental style, shall we say, will be much different, you know, even though it's same, and I don't know that it's the same ownership. You know, even though it's same, and I don't know that it's the same ownership. I know it's the same last name, but I believe the father is much different than the son in the sense of business. I know he has to purchase the property. So I'm just saying, I only want to caveat that, that, you know, when we first met on this project-
Correct. I should probably correct that. You're exactly right.
Yeah. That there was some enthusiasm to knowing that that situation, that is sometime concerning to those entities, may not be a factor. So I just, I didn't want to not mention that.
Right.
So, so the other thing, the thing we want to point out is that the planning board, through the master plan process, there's been a recommendation to have a mixture of non-residential and residential uses. You know, this group has been working very hard to bring some residential uses uptown, and it's been recommended to do it in a mixed-use fashion. So this project checks those boxes dramatically. It provides, you know, 46 housing units, and it also provides retail and non-residential. So I think you could find that it is consistent with the downtown vision for the Uptown. Yes?
Right, and it makes it consistent with existing retail and commercial along Central Street and other parts of that area.
Yes. Again, the next thing, this is all part of the Foxborough Center Overlay District. There's, you know, this project is quite consistent with the vision. It could not be done without the Foxborough Center Overlay District, so that zoning, it does check all the boxes on it. It encourages a mixed uses on a lot. We've already covered that. We, one of the really good points Jeff had, too, about the surrounding neighborhood is, you know, in addition to residential in that area, there's office buildings, funeral home, Town Hall, several banks, Memorial Hall, in-home offices, hair salons, and then the residential. So it really is already a mixed-used area, and this, you know, this actively will promote that further. Pedestrian and parking. This project has significant parking on site, and obviously, it will improve the pedestrian experience uptown. There'll be more people living. It'll create more people on sidewalks, whatnot. Housing opportunities and employment. Again, the non-residential will provide some employment. Obviously, the jobs created building the project will, and then having residents live uptown should create more of a demand for services uptown. Design. Does the board feel that this has, will up the level of design in the district? Yes, you do.
No, we definitely do, because we made such a big deal about the fact that Building A was on the 50-yard line by the common, and that we felt that it needed serious improvement in order to not just be in harmony with the rest of the thing, but also to make a statement that was not offensive in terms of the common and how people view it. It's still a very, you know, people are very proud of it, you know, and they wanted to have a look, so.
Great. And then, the last thing, we touched on the historic, and this is important, is that there's no uniform historical for uptown, but the board feel, worked very hard, as you know, to find a compromise between a new development and a sort of older common feel. And so Jeff was really good on making sure that we are not looking for reproduction, but that we are looking to complement and elevate the design in that area.
And again, I mean, I think that the applicant was good enough when we had an opportunity with Building A, with the scale of that building, where there could be, you know, sort of a rethinking of how you wanted to present it in a way that was, you know, perhaps a little more in keeping with some people's subjective vision of what Foxborough should be. You know, he was good enough to go that way, and I think we guided him in that way. That doesn't mean that you're going to be able to do that with every, you know, application or opportunity, because there was no way you could do that with Building B.
Right.
It just couldn't be done. So we were able to do it where it made sense, and, you know, where it couldn't be done, you know, we took a different approach.
You saw it in the softening as well.
Yeah, we did do quite a bit of softening with the roofline, and I think that was a deliberate effort to keep that not brick and keep it in the residential feel, because it was transitioning out of the Uptown area, so. Then we get into performance standards. These are standard for any site plan project, and I think these are more general. It has to do with, let's see, preservation of landscaping. I mean, obviously, there's not much out there. Off-street parking and loading, we discussed that. This is providing all the required residential parking, and in addition, it's also parking, providing parking for the commercial. And we, it also notes that there's 70 parking spaces available at Town Hall. Circulation, that's been thoroughly reviewed by Public Safety, and it's going to have, you know, two ways in and two ways out, so that's great. It's good circulation. Site access, again, being in the Uptown, its location, it has great site access. Any sidewalks that are damaged, obviously, the developer would replace them and repair that, and/or repair them. The DPW director will determine that. Then we get into, again-
Can I go back to that? Because that was one of my comments on that, and I wasn't, I thought maybe there was a disconnect, because I, I thought, when you were talking about damages, isn't it true that the only place that could be, would be in front of Building A?
Yes.
Yes, right.
Because they're rebuilding, right.
It's going to be done.
Building B is completely restructured on sidewalk.
So they're basically building new sidewalks on South and Market.
Right.
Or at least South.
South and Market.
Okay, South and Market, and then if they damage the School Street one, they would have to repair that.
Right, okay.
Then we get into architectural requirements. I feel like we don't need to kill that one, but I do think that the roof was heavily, you know, focused on, and also, we did add in a condition that there'll be a diminishment of, there'll be, the parapets should provide sound buffering to ensure that, you know, we are sensitive to any residential around.
Joseph Lynch is on Zoom.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you. And then we get into screening and buffering. This property doesn't abut any residential properties, but if you recall, the developer did offer to plant arborvitae's on the neighbor's property, if they want that. So that would only be if the neighbor allowed it, because it's on their property, but it is an offer that's been extended. Lighting, we're recommending to use the same conditions. We've, the lighting plan is sufficient, and we always have a condition in there where you, the board reserves the right to require a modification of lighting. Service areas are not, are going to be out on the street, which is great in the Uptown area. We have enough of that. Deliver, let's see, dumpsters will be, again, not on, not near the street. They'll be internal to the site, and they will be screened. And sewers will all be underground. There's water, there's sewer. They will be paying to tie into the sewer, considerable, which helps with the, you know, the whole MFN requirement. Drainage, that is, John, what do you think of the drainage? The drainage is no worse than it is? Is it a slight benefit?
It meets, it meets today's standards, and it's an improvement over what's today.
Great, great. And then off-site improvements, there really aren't any, except the sidewalks. Let's see, Public Safety had no issues. I mentioned that there's some concern about the existing buildings at times, and that's basically it for performance standards. The plans meet all construction standards and are satisfactory. Then we get into design review. And that has to do with things like compatibility of scale, and doors and windows, and I think, and the use, I think we've already discussed that. It's consistent with uses around the area. Relationship to open space, again, that's a little odd, because it's not really a lot of open space, but the, there, it has been designed to be compatible with adjacent land uses. You know, driveways were modified to accommodate Bay Colony, you know, to, rather than having two driveways side by side, they're actually consolidating. That makes great sense. So I think overall, there was consideration given. I know the grading of the Bank of America building, that was a factor in how they sighted the building. So there was a lot of consideration given to the, how it relates to open space and the adjoining structures. Again, the roof, spent a lot of time on the roof. I think taking away the two cupolas and the whole roof style of, sorry, the South Street project is really, when I went back after Jeff asked me to look at it, it was very telling. They definitely changed the roofline. It's much more broken up, much more residential, shall we say, in nature. The materials, again, a lot of time was spent, brick, clabs, whatever, the board spent a lot of time on that, and you were very consistent with your messaging on that. Facades, again, the nice thing about Building A is it's going to, that street wall, it's nice to have those buildings up against the common. It creates a sense of place. When pedestrians are walking by, they'll be looking in the windows. That's your kind of urban design for the suburban area, so I think you've, you've found that, and, you know, the brick complements the common well, and up, Building B has a softer appearance. Let's see, same thing we've already said. So basically, the board finds the proposed blend of historic and contemporary design to be suitable at the most recent revision of the design. Actually, I just found a typo. Most recent revision. Okay, so that's on the design. And then we get into the special permit criteria. Community needs served by the proposal. The net increase in housing units is 31. As you know, the, as we've discussed many times, the master plan and the downtown strategy have called for more residential development uptown. The residents of Foxborough very much treasure their uptown area. They want it to be a vibrant heart of the community. They want it to go back. Everybody tells me about how it used to be. You know, they remember, I don't know, pickles and places and different things, and wasn't there like a pickle jar somewhere?
That would have been over on Bird Street.
Foxborough General Store.
Maybe.
Sold pickles, yes.
That was a recent memory on Heather Harding's thing, something about pickles. Anyway, I know people have a lot of great memories, so, and that is-
Cutler's.
So again, the community needs to be served by the proposal. The board would be finding that it's it's consistent with the master plan and the downtown strategy, and that you're bringing people uptown. Traffic flow and safety, the proposed development is going to create very minor traffic impacts to the area, and so. Utilities, again, no issues with utilities. DPW, police, and fire have all signed off. As I said, the sewer will be a benefit, in the sense that they'll be buying in sewer capacity, which I know the Water and Sewer Board will appreciate. Neighborhood character and social structures, again, two of the buildings are in poor condition. You're going to end up with two, you know, high-quality buildings with, you know, elevated design. You're going to have more people living uptown, and it will create sort of a new community uptown, which I think that will achieve a lot of the goals of the master plan, and it'll help achieve the vision of the community. Impact on the natural environment, again, it meets the stormwater standards and is better than what's out there today. We also think the design and landscaping will improve the visual appeal out here uptown. And then the economic and fiscal impacts. The project is estimated to generate $111,000 per year in real estate taxes. Right now, they collect about $20,000 in real estate taxes, so there will be an increase. The one-time revenue to the town would be $327,000 for building water and sewer and other permits. And then, you know, obviously, the employment is a great benefit. So, so those are kind of all the findings in special permit, and I would suggest that the board sort of discuss and decide whether you agree with them, and move from there.
Well, I don't know how much more discussion we need. I mean, we had, you know, extended public hearings on this, and a lot of input from both the Design Review Committee, who had mixed emotions about the buildings, came in here. We probably had Mr. Lynch do at least two or three different iterations of, to change the buildings to be more in compliance with the overall view of the board and staff. And I think you're, you know, you did a good job of like pointing out everything in all, in all of the findings. I'm certainly open to any further discussion, or if I, if we hear none, to take a vote on, you know, your emotion, to take a vote on the findings and the documents as written.
I would, I would concur with that. And, you know, I don't think, this hasn't been a perfect project yet that I've ever seen, although I must say, your State Hospital project probably came closest.
It was good, but I, you know, and I think it helped that, that Joe, Mr. Lynch was-
Absolutely.
Very amenable to-
Absolutely.
You know, dealing with it. You know, I think it helped, you know, maybe it's easy for me to say this, but it helps that he is a resident of the town, that he grew up here, he's spent his entire life here, and he gets it. And, you know, while his architect, and he may have had a certain vision in the early going, he was open to coming around to the concepts that were laid out by Design Review and our board, and I think the project's going to be really good in the end.
I do. And I, I concur, and I probably should have, you know, finished my thought, is that I haven't seen a perfect project, and I don't think this one is, but I think it's a very credible effort to what the master plan is directing us to do in the downtown area.
I would agree with that.
It's definitely a good faith effort.
So any other comments or questions?
Yeah?
John?
No.
Okay.
So do you want to maybe make a motion on the findings first, and then we'll go into each special permit?
I'll make a motion to accept the findings as written.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so there are, you would be voting, so the conditions are all the standard conditions, and let me just see what the unique special ones are, just to, in case Linda Shay's watching, I want to make sure she hears this. Just to highlight, all mechanical units, including HVAC, shall be state-of-the-art with respect to noise generation, and shall be located on the rooftop. Final, and again, to clarify on that, remember when we had Stefan come in, obviously, the parts that have to be on the ground have to be on the ground, and then, but the main parts are on the, you know, on the, but there was some question during the Wall Street one of, certain things have to be on the ground. No. The board understands that if it has to be on the ground by code, that's where it goes, but that the-
I think they had different units.
They did. Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. But to be clear, it will be on the roof, and we did call for the parapets to serve as sound barriers. We're recommending the applicant install, consider installing a grease trap and odor control system in case there's a restaurant. As of right now, we have no indication it would be a restaurant, but obviously, it might be easier to do that now than try to retrofit it if a restaurant wanted to come in there. The dumpsters, grease traps, and deliveries, ooh, to the restaurant. Wait, let's take that out.
Correct.
Let's take out "to the restaurant" there, because I think that was from an old one. So just in general, emptying the dumpsters, grease traps, and/or deliveries shall not occur before 7:00 AM or after 10:00 PM. That's to protect the neighbors, both new and existing. Building A shall contain 14 spaces in the ground-level garage. Snow shall be removed off-site if accumulation causes parking spaces to be lost or if public safety deemed necessary. No parking of vehicles on school, market, or South Street, associated with construction, shall I say. And that the applicant has to install no parking signs and figure out where their construction vehicles are going to go. And that can be managed through a, you know, sort of a construction management process with the building department. You have to maintain all construction materials on site, and can't restrict access. Oh, here's the construction management plan. That goes through the building commissioner. Soil testing will confirm any soil assumptions, and then we also want to make sure we have a plan certifying the height, when all said and done, to ensure that it complies with the height requirements. So those are the special conditions over and above the standard. The three permits you're being asked to issue are, I'll go back to them. One is a mixed use with more than three dwelling units. This would be 46 dwelling units. The second special permit is for height, to allow four stories where three and a half stories are allowed by right, for Building A only. And then a reduction in building side, building setbacks is the third special permit, and that would be to allow half a foot and six feet for Building A, where 10 feet is required, and all other setbacks would, would meet.
Comply.
So those are the three special permits, and I would suggest you do a roll call vote.
And take them separately?
Sure.
Sure. I'd make a motion that the board approve a special permit to allow a mixed-use project with more than three dwelling units.
I'll second that one.
What say, you want a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, Jeff Peterson, aye. The selectmen actually say their names, so I don't know if you're supposed to do that or not.
Every member said aye, correct?
Correct.
Aye. So I'll make a motion on the special permit number two, for the height, to allow four stories where three and a half are allowed by right in the F-Car district for Building A.
Sir, second?
I'll second that.
Yes, right.
Individually, all those in favor?
Aye.
White House, yes.
Aye.
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 And is there a motion for special permit number three?
I'd make a motion that we, the board approve a special permit to allow a minimum building sideline setback of half a foot and six feet for Building A, where 10 feet is required, where 10 feet is required.
I'll second that motion.
Again, a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is Mr. Lynch still want to talk to us? Is he on Zoom?
He's probably just listening in.
Okay.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Ask him if he wants to chime in.
You ask him.
Mr. Lynch, do you have anything you would like to say, sir?
Well, thanks for attending.
Joe's been a few words.
What is it, F9 or something when you're on your phone? F6?
Hello?
No, there's no F. Oh, star six, star nine.
I wanted to thank you.
We hear him, but we don't see him, so, we're not hearing him too well either.
He probably just wants to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.